I guess I am ready. Uh, all right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this. Uh, special meeting of the Town of Grizzle Board of Finance to order March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. At six P M. In the town hall meeting room. First item on the agenda is the roll call called to order.
We have all members with the exception of.
Number two, old business, uh, a discussion and possible action on creating recreation budget policy. For for now, I guess we'll need a a motion perhaps to move that down on the. On the agenda, um, that was dependent on Dale, um, and since she's not here, if we could get a motion.
I'll make a motion after we. Addle that to the end.
Uh, the end of, uh.
To the end to.
After.
After, yeah. Be so we can see if you will.
Okay. Can I get a second on that? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, so then we're gonna go right into, uh. To be discussion of possible action on fiscal year. Uh, twenty twenty five budget. Everybody should have their, um. Mill rate sheet. Um, as it's currently sits at three point, uh, one, two, if it was unadjusted, as everything is currently presented. Just some kind of like this very, very last minute, um, information. I was in contact with the superintendent. Uh, just recently. They are having a board of education meeting tonight. One of those items on the agenda, and hopefully it's towards the top of the agenda. Uh, would be, um, a consideration of raising the tuition. Currently, I believe that the revenue is budgeted at three point eight million. He, uh. He believes that, uh, the new tuition number is gonna sit, um, more like four point two million. Um, so that's one of the things that they're going to be, I guess, looking at and voting on. This evening, so hopefully it's sooner than later.
All set.
It's 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 a done deal. Okay, so it is at four point two. So I had asked Eric in the event that that did happen to create a new. Um, budget sheet for us in preparation. So, all right, well, that's that's good news.
How was that adjust?
So, you know, essentially, you know, there's there's two schools of thought. You continue down the road that you were on, and that ends up with a. With a lower, you know, mill rate that ends up going to the public, or you end up, you know, cutting less if you wanna go higher. So you can see where the new the new numbers are, so. You know, typically, I don't offer an opinion on on anything that we discuss. The only time that I do. Is is that budget time, um. And and I do so really for for two reasons. Um, we're sitting at the table with. Seven. Seven different people with potentially seven very different ideas, so I think that it's. Important that. Really, we as a board know where everyone everyone sits, um, at the same time. There could potentially be a situation where I've gotta either create a break a tie. So it's kinda nice to know where I sit, not that I can't change my mind. I've changed my mind several times as a. As a result of some spirited discussion that we've had, um, where I've seen things from a but a different viewpoint as this discussion has continued. Um, and the second reason is obviously. This is a huge impact, an impact on our on our on the taxpayers, um, on the voters, and I think it's important that they also know. You know, where I where I stand. So I guess I'll start things off. I just. Where where I guess I sort of think we should make the cuts, but obviously that holds no bearing on what this body decides. So I'll just go down the list, um. Board of Education. I would, uh, cut five hundred and sixty thousand from the Board of Education. That would put them, uh, just very, very slightly over that three percent mark, which was the, uh, the guidance that we had. We had put out. Um, I would. Cut capital. By five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, however, what I would then do is I would utilize. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of surplus. I believe right now we're looking at about five sixty seven plus or minus. Um, over over by policy, I would use five hundred and fifty, and I wanna put in the five sixty seven just because. I do wanna have just a little bit of a buffer, so you know, in the event that we. Things have to adjust if things don't come in quite right. So I would, um, I would supplant that cut with, uh, five hundred and fifty out of. Surplus with obviously the understanding that there is the potential that we may have to pull back all or part of that. Um, next year, depending on what we're looking at from, um, from a revenue, a revenue standpoint. I would cut the, um. I would cut the grant writer. Which is, uh, forty two thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars. With regard to, I I would also. I would the the new highway position is also on my list. And, um. I guess before I offered up. My my thought on that. Um, I have some questions for. Either the Board of Selectmen or 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 Todd. If that were to become a part time position. Is that feasible and can it work? And how would it work? Is that nineteen and a half, Eric?
That's the highest we can do without it being. Uh, subject to benefits.
Can you make it work? Would it work? Can you hire somebody at nineteen and a half hours? Okay, Tina?
Yeah, and and I am speaking and. This is nothing. This is something that the Board of Selectmen have we've done on our own. No participation from him. This is our viewpoint. Um, this. Right here is a stack of since I started. The calls, the complaints, the visits, the emails. Or public works. Okay, it's huge. Um, it's everything from the roadwork to tree scum to ice to, um. It. Drainage. Floodings. Um, we had a gentleman in today. I have seven pictures that I haven't shown you yet. Of flooding that's going on up around, um, Totem Lane. Um, in people's yards, and we'll have to talk about that tonight. But. When I think about. That small crew, and it is a small crew. If they're off, and I I saw them out today. Um, there were two crews out doing tunnels, and I'm getting complaints on flooding. Um. It would be helpful to have that extra person. The volume is massive. And it all comes through the Selectmen's office.
So the selectmen are of the position that a. Additional highway. Person is. Is greatly needed?
Personally, for me, um, and and please reach speed up. Um, yes, greatly needed.
Okay. So for for now, for now, I won't. I won't put that on my on my list. Just the rest of the board can obviously know that that was on my that was on my list, and I had it worked out both ways between a. Um, cutting full time or just making it part time. Um, I mean, obviously, we're gonna, I guess, and we're gonna have. Six other opinions, and we'll have to figure it out from there, um. The other, the other area that. I would I would consider cutting. Um, that the numbers for me just didn't make sense with the registrar. Um, and. The one thing I guess that didn't make sense was. That. It was indicated that the numbers for, um. Contractual intent had to go up because of early voting. And they went up by. Ninety one hundred and eighty dollars. But if you and 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 I had requested Eric pull me a sheet from. Twenty twenty four. And. It had increased in twenty twenty four's budget for early voting. Um, fifty three hundred per actual election day. Um, November municipal, two budget and one additional, this says. And compare that to what twenty twenty five is, fifty three hundred actual. November municipal. Two primary, one referendum, so that's the same number, um, early voting. On on twenty twenty four, it was budgeted for thirty days of early voting, and twenty twenty five, or it went up ninety one. Hundred and change. It's. Budgeting for twenty eight days of early voting. So. The verbiage is 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 pretty much identical. Twenty twenty four also includes stipend increases for deputies due to increased responsibilities for E V. Twenty twenty five also includes stipend increases for deputies due to increased responsibilities for E V. Proposed fifteen hundred dollars per year payable monthly with required. Um, with required monthly, and that was. For twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five says proposed fifteen hundred per year payable monthly with required monthly responsibilities. So I don't see why. Based on what I'm reading here, um. There's an additional ninety one hundred and eighty dollars. In that particular line item from. Twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, and there is, in fact, I guess, two less days of of early voting, so. Um, that ninety one eighty had made, uh, had made my list. And you happen to have, um. Any extras of this twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four that you can hand out just to show everybody what it is that I'm. Talking about, so they they have that as well.
Mister Chairman, I had in my notes the same question. It didn't add up for me as well.
So, um, yeah, like, I don't know. Wait, at what point you came in, the Board of Ed did vote for a tuition increase of four point, um, two million. Um, the increase of four hundred thousand, so that impacts the. The the mill rate where we're gonna land. So if, um. You know, if the highway positions were cut. Um, the full time was one fifteen, two eighty seven, the part time, if we made it part time, it would be a cut of eighty four, three sixty three, so that would land us. Between a one, uh. One million, two hundred and seventy six thousand. And change in one million, two hundred and forty five thousand and change. So that puts us somewhere right around that one point two five if. The highway position was, um, was not cut. Um, then that puts us. I guess probably closer to about a one point. Three, five, I'll say, on where we would where we would land. Does that sound right, Eric?
Think I'm missing something. I have the five sixty.
Five fifty?
Now the five sixty for Board of.
Yeah, five sixty for Board of Ed, five fifty for capital.
That becomes a wash, though.
Right, that's a wash, yep.
Uh, forty two, one forty five.
Forty two, one forty five.
And then you're gonna cut the public works full time of.
If if we. If we kept the public works in there and we cut the extra ninety one eighty.
If you kept the part time in there?
If we just kept it full time. Let's just say we kept it full. I'm just kinda curious where we would land. And then we cut the ninety one eighty from registrars.
Yeah, one point nine eight.
Well, don't we have to account for the five fifty cut in capital? Because we are replacing it with surplus.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter. You're gonna. Increase your revenues. By the same amount.
Right.
So it's gonna end up washing out.
Okay.
And the five sixty was the cut where?
Uh, from Board of Ed. That would bring them down to about three percent.
To three percent?
Anybody else? Who who wants to go next? I don't want to hear anybody else. Who wants to go next? Okay. Go ahead.
I was on the same thought process as you, Capital. Of, um, cutting. The five fifty and then replacing it from our. Um, I differ with you on the Board of Ed, especially in light of them raising their. Uh, tuition. To help with this budget cycle. Penalizing that five hundred and sixty thousand dollars while only penalizing. Um, both cutting, if you will. The the way you were going to, they're gonna have to cut positions. And then we're gonna hire positions in town. That doesn't seem right to me. Especially with the fact that they're raising their tuition. Um, they didn't have to do that. But what I had done for numbers. What I would suggest is the capital. As we had spoken, um. And this would put us at a one point five. Mill rate, and that would be. To fund the grant writer. And H R. Full time, and the reason why I said the grant won't write a full time is because that's a that's gonna bring income. Into the town. Um, this board in in particular has spoken numerous times about grant writing. And to have the op- opportunity to. Have a grant writer to bring in funds for the town to help with projects, but yet. Well, you know, not fund it is. We kind of. Talking on both sides of our mouths, and then also because of the, um. The selectwoman had stated that, you know, part time H R was desperately needed. I wanted to fund that, um. And then cutting. The Board of Ed. About three hundred and forty seven thousand. If you actually, uh. Add another. Well, to that, so fifty nine, three fifty nine. That put me at about one point five. With the new with the new projections. Am I right in that? Estimated?
Yeah, Scott, you were, I was. I didn't have the surplus in there, so it wouldn't be one, three, seven.
Okay, I was gonna follow back up on that, cuz I'm like, I don't understand. I I was gonna say a cut, a cut was a cut, I was, so I was following it. Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I was like, eh, we'll we'll go back to it.
So, um. Capital, five fifty. Cutting eighty four, eight, eight, one from the general. Okay, and basically what that would be. Um, would be funding everything, and then. Instead of a part time grant writer, it'd be a full time grant writer. And a part time H R. Um, and then Board of Ed. Three forty seven, two fifty eight. I should be right, number one, five.
One, five, seven.
Yeah, um. And I would also. I mean. There's other options that we could do there, but I think that's, um. A good place to land, but I would make a a request. For us to consider. Um. That. If in the near future, the Board of Ed was to come to us and say that they found that they have an increase in tuition. And enrollment. That. Those funds be split between the Board of Ed and the General Government in the percentages. Of. Their the cuts being made to those departments. Those areas. Um, last year, they came back with a hundred and fifty thousand, and none of it went to them. And I don't believe that that's fair, since they're the ones bringing it back.
All right, thank you. Who would like to go next?
Like a question.
Okay, Gary.
I'll agree with you on the, um, five hundred and fifty. Five thousand for the Board of Education. Um, the capital, the capital, you said that's a wash and cut. I mean, you fund it and then refund it. Cut it and refund it with. So that's cutting nothing from capital?
Right.
So I would actually like to take another look at that. And see if there's something else that can be looked at. I don't have it in front of me, but I wouldn't mind looking at that. The grant writer, I think it, I think whatever we. Full time, part time, I think. That. It'll pay for itself. The H R person is wanted. I agree with that. Um, the complaint about the. The complaints about the town, um. Is that something new just this year, or is it like? Continuing, I mean, when you come and say that there's a bunch of complaints. Is it just new this year? There's a bunch of complaints?
What I have, and this is what I've had, we have thirteen. Um. Dead trees, down limbs, thirty nine washouts, pavings, curb, hot holes. Thirteen drainage sewer lines. Um, roadside trash complaints. Fifteen mailbox replacement, six. Complaints assistance for snow and ice removal, twelve, flooding, fourteen. Sign damage, requests for signage, nineteen, sideline issues and knowing, eight. Issues, we had a lot of fiber insulation throughout the town. That has been a nightmare. Um, I have had to contact public works, um, at least fifteen times for them to go back out. View the damage that was done, contact the contractor, so that was very time consuming for public works. This is not new. It's just that.
I think the Board of Education is tracking it better than.
That's what I'd like to know. I mean, I mean, you just put that up in front of me. I don't, I can't compare it from year to year to year. Alls I can ask you.
It's been consistent since I've been in office. It it has been consistent. You know, for example, we had a gentleman earlier this week. I had two gentlemen come in on. Um, flooding and bridge issues. Then I had, as I said, the gentleman today, and I I've got all of the photos. We've got another flooding issue that has to be taken care of. And it it is coming from town property, so that's going to be on public works.
Okay, um. The registrar, a question on cutting registrar. So you approved this, so you tell me. Why this would be different according to what we see here? If you guys approved what they are attaching to.
All the days they wanna.
So, so what I'm asking is what the chairman brought up. Is it factual or is it not factual?
I think it's factual, but we weren't looking at last year's. Amounts. We we did not look at last year's amounts and.
Why wouldn't you look at last year?
Um. It was difficult to get the two of them in the same room together at the same time.
So we don't know if this is. Factual or not.
It's factual. You bet with them. Did you review it with the registrar?
Well.
Did you measure it?
They told us what they wanted. Um, I'm asking you guys because we're bringing up from year to year.
Conversation you had with them. The reality is, we don't really think they need ten days, but but that's that's all. That's all, you know, we get it, but. The early voting is the issue. That's the.
Yeah, I understand the issue. I I the questioning of the number is what I'm looking for. That's that. When we question the numbers, is it? Is it bloated or is it not bloated?
There's nothing bloated on our budget period.
It, do they need it or do they not need it?
According to them, they need it. By statute, by general statutes. They need the ten days, and and so if our registers don't work, we have to replace them with other people that do work, because they have to be man. Certain amount of people on Republican end, a certain amount of people, never kind of, and so I don't, do will you, do we agree with? The early voting? Probably not, but but that's not.
I understand where we have to go by the law. But if we cut that nine thousand dollars and we don't go by the law, what would happen? So what, I mean, so will you come back to the Board of Finance and ask for more money?
So Martin, I think you had come in after after that. No, no, it's fine. No, I think you came in after the first, after that part. So just to read you in, I had. A as as part of what I said, I I I would look at cutting ninety one eighty, uh, the registrar, because I looked at twenty twenty four and compared it to twenty twenty five. And in twenty twenty four, they added in extra money in twenty four for all of the early voting. And in twenty twenty five, it was actually two days less than.
I think every government official like you guys are pushing that, uh, our. State of Connecticut to shrink it down, shrink it down, shrink it down, but we have to go based on what. They're saying they need to. Mandate or fund, then. You know, do we agree with it?
Right.
The answer is, well.
Right, right. No, it just, their verbiage was identical. They were gonna do two days less this year, but their number was ninety one hundred and eighty. When last year they already put in the money to do the early voting, so.
Is if if they're not doing, not that they're not doing their job, but if they don't. Do what they're. They're directly contracted to do, and we have to replace them with some of our group staff. That makes that number go up a little bit, that makes that, except for.
Sorry, Gary, I didn't mean to.
I didn't mean to.
No, I'm just looking. I'm just looking for facts, that's all, and I don't. I can't get an answer. They're not here. And cutting nine ninety one thousand, nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars without knowing facts, I can't agree to that until I know the facts, so. I won't agree to that until somebody tells me differently. That's all I have.
Eric, I just wanna clarify, that one, three, seven was if we kept the highway worker intact. Okay. Um, who would like to go next?
I'll go next.
Thank you.
I agree with the, um, five fifty cut in capital. Um, but I would only, um. Replace it with four fifty from. Um, our reserves. So it would be a net cut of about a hundred, and I would ask, um. You know, the Capitol Committee has been a very gracious in in working out where. Our limited funds would go, and so I would ask them to come back and and make their suggestions on where they might want to make that. Um, make that cut, um. Because we don't have the depth of understanding of what's needed, what's been waiting. What can't wait any longer, so that's, um, my comment on the capital, um. I agree with the five fifty Board of Ed cut.
Well, mine was five sixty.
Oh, okay, mine was five eighty, so, um, but but five sixty is okay.
Okay.
Um. The, um. I would, uh, reduce the nine thousand from, uh, the registrar's budget. Um, it seems to me that, um, if in fact. Um, they had coverage for the statutory required. Um, early voting days in prior years for the same amount of money that. Um, if they do go over because maybe of hourly wage increases or something like that, um. Eric can come back to the board and and ask for, um, some additional, um, funds, um. I, um, I agree to put in the the roads person. Um. I think, um, a full time H R person is probably not. Um, a good thing to do, um, in one fell swoop. I think we need to. Uh, work into that. Um. That position, so I would support a part time H R. Um, and a part time grant writer. Um, I know they're harder to find, and if in fact. We find that we can't get anybody to do that work, then. This time next year, we're gonna have to say, okay, we tried it one way, and and we tried to be economical and move forward. It's it's not gonna work that way, and then we'll have to look at the full time. It's, it's not gonna work that way and then we'll have to look at the full-time um positions. I, I understand um that a couple of the members are concerned about the cuts to the Board of Ed, but keep in mind that the Board of Ed by statute has a little bit more flexibility with money, um overrun money that they have now. They don't have to give it back. They can and and perhaps a Board of uh Ed person who might be here could explain it better, but but in in the general thousand mile view, um it's they, they don't have to put the money back in the general budget. They can, they can uh shift it year to year. So so the whole landscape has changed as far as um money that the Board of Ed doesn't use now.
I believe according to that statute that was written, it specifies that we are not to use that against them.
Well, no, we're not, but we're just, no, no, I'm just.
Just the chairman by hers.
I I I hear you. I I hear you. I understand where you're coming from. I think the rest of the board does. I just, I wanted her to just be able to finish. Your, your point has definitely been made on that, Rob. Do you wanna?
You're right, the statute has changed the availability to put one in.
Right.
If not, and I will speak from from my understanding, we would not do so without working with Board Chair and Board Chair and Board of Finance. Or to to come through some agreement of how that would be, put some parameters in. So there is not a non-laxing account as a break down.
Okay, so that that account hasn't been, or that policy hasn't been created yet.
Board's position is to work with the Board of Finance to create safeguards.
Okay.
And and to your point, Rob, you're you're a hundred percent correct.
And not that I'm, and and maybe Rob, you know, I I understand. I understand where you're coming from. Not that I'm holding it against them. It's just that they have more flexibility once they put this program into place to cover um unexpected overruns in certain areas and and which is a good thing for them. I don't wanna see it built into a budget that that is already very, very tight. And so that's my, that's where I'm coming from.
Who would like to go next?
I guess I will. But um basically getting on the same points that have been raised already, um I will looking at the grant writer and the uh HR person, I think to sure. Point of the first recommend is that the HR person was more vital. I think that's you know, her assessment is what we have to go on. I guess we'll either fund that. I think a full-time position probably wouldn't be bad. Um, halftime grant writer, as Gary just said, would probably pay for itself if we can find it, I think. So I would like to do half, halftime grant writer, well, I mean, HR. Um, I thought about the part-time public works employee. If that's not something that's gonna be effective, then we're probably better off trying to fund that full-time, um because we'll probably want to spend more money along whenever we don't. Um, and as to the cuts in the Board of Ed, I looked at that closely last night and really couldn't come up with anything definitively. So the chairman thinks five sixty is a doable number. I think that's something I can endorse. As with capital, um again, that's a, seems to be um ineffective use of funding and not in addition to the to the tax burden at this point, hopefully not too much next time. Uh, I, the registered numbers did kind of raise a red flag with me, but uh, so it seems reasonable that we can look at that again. And ninety-one eighty is not significantly that much. So I could go along with that as well. Um and uh so that was my thinking going forward.
Thank you. Tom or Matt, who would you go next?
Um, I'll go next, I guess. Uh, Eric, could you indulge me if I shot you a few numbers? Cause I'm gonna cancel being a a little higher on that mill rate than my um partners here. All right. So I'm looking at a Board of Ed cut of four fifty. Going the same thing with capital, um we're cutting the five fifty, replacing the five fifty, which would obviously, I believe, is that not the amount that we're over in our reserve or where we want it to be? So we're still hitting our target?
Yeah.
Okay. The grant writer I would like to cut. However, I would like to have the HR there. And the reason being is I know we discussed this. And what we were told is the time should be freed up from the select person a little bit and from Eric, which would provide some hours possibly maybe to look at some of those grants. So maybe that would alleviate some without putting ball of burden on the taxpayer. Um, a highway department person full-time, I'd like to leave that. And cut that uh ninety-one eighty from the registrars. And tell me where we're at, please. One point four nine.
Board of Education cut the four twenty, that puts them at a three point five percent increase. They asked for a four point eight. We got about a three point three last year. Um, capital, I agree with the five fifty, five fifty cost replacement from general funds. Help the grant writer. Keep HR. Town, HR person. And cut the ninety-one eighty from the Board of Education.
Chairman, real quick.
Yes, sir.
I think Tom or I specified on the HR, was that full-time or part-time? Was it that like a fifty-two and a seventy-five or?
It was a part-time.
It was two days a week, correct?
It was, okay.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, question.
Mr. Chairman, when we put that in, we were hoping that the Board of Ed would pick up proportionally number of employees they have with ours. Cause we thought we both could use an HR program. So to put it all on our municipal government is not what we you agree, that's, that's not the way we designed it. We were hoping the Board would pick up. We had no idea the number was, I think, sixty forty, but based off of told employees, we'd work out a number between one HR person and a both departments. That's what our game plan was.
Okay.
And and if it doesn't work, but I'm just saying that's what our game plan was.
If it doesn't work, what does it require?
So you you budgeted what? It was fifty-five, correct? With the mindset of that being two days and would hope that the Board of Ed was gonna pick up three days?
That's, that's what we're, that's, and we were gonna base up a number of employees or some formula that would be.
We have fifty-two in there.
Fifty-two.
We need expectation it'd be two days a week, whether it's someone part-time or someone shared.
Okay.
But Mr. Chairman, we can't really obligate the Board of Ed to.
But that's what our time was. We would offer it.
Right.
Right.
If not, we would just hire someone part-time at the town.
Okay. And another question.
Um, just really quickly, what with Tom's uh scenario, what were we at for a no rate?
I missed his uh Board of Ed.
Four twenty?
Four twenty.
So you add four twenty, the grant writer, capital, um, the ninety-one eighty. Was there anything else, Tom?
The uh no, that's it.
You were keeping highway?
Yeah.
That would put us at two point one four.
Take out the highway.
That would put us at two point oh one.
So.
I have, I I forgot one that I wanted to add. I'm sorry. Um, the recreation, we've been talking about a new programming line item of two thousand dollars, adding that in um to their budget to assist in um not only new programming, but giving um the director an opportunity to move uh funds from other line items um of programs that may not be working or or may be costing him less net so that he would have um um a little bit more flexibility for creativity going in, out into the future, but still providing to us um um more information about break even of programming, cause we don't have that.
So you're looking to add two thousand dollars additional to his budget?
In a new align item. Yes.
Then you, would that would obviously, I'm going to guess, maybe not so obviously, conditional upon our approval of the new recreation policy?
Correct, correct. Um, and and the other question that I had, um the road complaints that have come in and and requests for assistance, um does the Selectment's Office track where they're coming from? If they're mostly in the town, if there's a lot more in the borough? Is it sort of the same as it's always been and?
It's pretty well spread out. For example, um I found that the biggest uh, the largest number of complaints or the biggest ordeals that we had, it was especially during the flooding season last year, but but these things continue. We had Pleasant View here in the borough, McKenna Avenue here in the borough. That that's gonna be an ongoing problem and I don't know how that's gonna get resolved. State's gonna have to get involved with that one. Coal Pit Hill Road is a nightmare. Um, we had three calls come in, yes, three this week for Coal Pit Hill Road. Um, and you just kind of hold your breath and hope you're not gonna have another deluge of rain. And um Rickstown, a number of complaints coming from Rickstown. And again, it was um after the paving, uh before curbing went in, any of that, flooding, um, so it's it's spread out evenly.
So is the allocation of uh funds from the borough, is that keeping up with uh inflation and the increased need? Um, their, their funds that they allocate, these are mainly state funds, are they? Or that combination of state funds and taxes?
We get that town made a road. Whatever state gives them, they give us, I can get.
So if the state cuts them, then we have to make up the difference.
And they are town taxpayers.
I I understand, I understand.
Well, they checked, they actually changed it this year where they send us the money directly, the borough used again.
Okay.
Right, we have all heard uh everyone else's ideas, thoughts and ideas, so it's now time to get to work. Who would like to?
I'd make them, like to make a motion to cut five hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Board of Ed.
Second.
Hey, we have a first and a second to cut five hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Board of Ed. Is there any discussion? Here and then we're gonna vote. You have discussion, Rob?
Yeah, I just, I would just like to point out that, again, they brought in, they raised their tuitions to help us and we're cutting down a significant amount. It's gonna most likely mean positions. Because as it was said earlier, you look through their budget, they don't have much room to move. And we're gonna be cutting positions there, but you have hiring positions in the town. That doesn't seem quite right, but that's just for record.
Okay, any other discussion? Here and then we're going to vote. All in favor of cutting five hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Board of Ed budget?
Aye.
That's three. Any opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Um, so we are currently tied. I'm gonna uh, I'm gonna be an I. That motion carries.
I would like to make a motion for the capital to um, what what um that um, I mean, five hundred and fifty thousand, about one hundred thousand dollars cut from that.
How much, Gary?
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
So you're not really cutting it, you're just using surplus to cover it.
So you wanna cut four fifty and and utilize four hundred and fifty thousand from surplus?
Well, Scott, we're not really cutting it. We're leaving it as is.
Yeah.
Well, we don't need to do that in a separate, we don't need to do that in a separate motion?
No.
Okay.
So the capital will have to cut a hundred thousand dollars.
So you're cutting capital a hundred and you're using four fifty of surplus?
That's what I want to make a motion for.
So cut capital a hundred thousand and use four hundred and fifty thousand? And that's from surplus to fund the budget as presented?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a? Does everyone understand that motion?
No, please review it.
Okay.
Right? No, can I?
Eric, absolutely. Go right ahead.
So the capital budget right now is one million seven hundred seventy-three thousand three sixty-seven. So what we're gonna do is Gary wants to cut it a hundred thousand, one point six seven three. The capital budget's gonna stay at that, but we're gonna take four hundred and fifty thousand out of surplus with you guys knowing that that is just to cover a capital. If it was, if you didn't use that capital, you would be cutting the budget down or that surplus.
So Eric, to make it easier and maybe a little more transparent, can we do this in two different motions? One would be to cut capital by five hundred and fifty thousand and the second would be, would be to take four hundred and fifty from surplus and put it into the capital budget? It is essentially, it is identical. It's the same thing, but it's a lot easier, I think, to understand it a lot more transparent.
I think it's more transparent if we just have two separate votes, one to cut a hundred from capital and then um one to ha- uh vote on a four hundred and fifty thousand contribution from surplus to fund the budget. Two separate votes.
Okay, however, it should be two votes no matter what.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't want any of the taxpayers to think that we've cut five hundred and fifty from capital because if, if they read it and don't see the second shoe dropping, they'll think that we made a a very large cut.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm gonna do the first one?
I'm motion to cut um capital by one hundred thousand.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to cut one hundred thousand dollars from the capital budget. We have any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Why four fifty and not the five fifty that we have in the overflow that we need to use? What was the purpose of cutting the hundred thousand?
Because I think we've got a, in my opinion, I agree with Gail. I mean, we are cutting other places and we're gonna leave it up to capital to figure out where we can cut some of that. We're gonna leave it up to them and I don't have a problem with that. Um, I just think it's, everybody's gonna take a little bit of cut throughout the.
But then we would have a hundred thousand overage that needs to be utilized. And if you use it towards operating budget, that creates a gap that we have to make up next year. By applying it to capital, it's a, we don't have to fill that gap next year because it's a one-time.
Well, I could agree with you on that, but there are places within budget that we actually want to fund this year and we don't wanna overtax the taxpayer. And we have this overage and I think it, the use, and we've gone through this before, I know we have to make it up. la- next year, but.
So you're suggesting that we take that hundred thousand and put it towards our operating budget?
Yes, put it towards some of the other the other things that we are having the budget, so we don't raise the taxes. We don't raise the taxes as much as we have to this year.
Are we still doing a discussion on the motion?
We we are, we are.
Eric, what what was capital last year and the year before, please?
Last year was one point seven two two million, the year before was one point six seven eight.
So so Eric, based on the two motions, essentially if we were looking to fund capital a hundred percent, we would just eliminate the hundred thousand dollar motion for the cut, correct?
Um Eric, what did we cut from um capital last year?
I don't think.
I believe it was one hundred thirty-two thousand, I think, on Chromebooks.
Oh, that's right.
Around that, you know, was close to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is great stating, um I know we'll look at the mill rate, but we still gotta look at what the town needs. Also, I just I just don't want that to be overlooked um when you vote here.
Any other discussion?
I just. Hold on, hold on. Last year you cut capital two oh seven five one six.
Any other discussion? Okay, so there's a first and a second motion on the order to cut a hundred thousand dollars from capital, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, aye, aye.
Another tie. I am also a nay. Motion fails.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to contribute uh five hundred and fifty thousand from surplus uh to fund the budget.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second to contribute five hundred and fifty from surplus to fund the capital budget. Any discussion? Here and now, we're gonna vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to uh make a motion to add a new line item to the rec um department budget um entitled new programming and fund it with two thousand dollars uh pending uh pending approval of the um recreation department um policy.
Second that motion.
Hey, we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to create a new line and within the rec department budget titled new programming, funding it with two thousand dollars and that would be contingent upon the approval of the new rec department uh budget structure policy, which we'll be discussing once this this portion of our meeting is over. Um any discussion?
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. How is that different than program development?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How is that different than program development? Cause currently in their um budget, they have fifty-four twenty-six, which is program development and that was uh being requested to be funded at seventeen thousand.
It's it's my understanding that program development are is is for um programming that's already been anticipated and scheduled, it's um and is um and is being um uh organized and 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 uh when you work with the Board of Ed, for example, or with other groups, um new programming line item is new programming that has not even been anticipated at the budget cycle, but it's becomes an opportunity that the director becomes aware of mid-budget cycle and and wants to be able to take advantage during uh the budget cycle. Um is is that my?
Yeah, so currently it covers its town events. Um at last year's budget, you notice there's means out of that line item because things like jerseys that just didn't make sense were put in the proper line items in this budget. So right now it's completely town events and ten thousand as a fireworks show.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Perhaps next year we should just rename them.
According to me.
For next year, they should be renamed so that they're a little bit more clear. So instead of program development, it should be town events.
It's existing, correct, Ryan?
Yeah, that's why it was an existing line item.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, though, that line item refers to existing programming in existing town events, not not new.
But you're right, we can we can add the word existing to it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We could certainly make that change, that change could be whenever, I should just, that's administrative, so it's not like we're adding a new line item or we're gonna just.
No, no, it's just that's why.
Yep, nope.
Question, getting two funds for program development, it just didn't make sense.
Right. Any further discussion? Here and now, we're gonna vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the um grant writer for forty thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Can we approve it? I don't.
I make a motion to approve it.
I don't believe we have to, as long as we only need to make a motion to cut it, if we if we don't do anything, it remains.
Okay.
If if we don't make a motion to cut it, then it stays intact.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to cut nine thousand from the I'm sorry, which? Uh yeah, registrar, what section is that, Eric?
Fourteen oh one.
Thank you. Um that's line item uh five one two zero on page fourteen oh one.
And that's a cut of nine thousand?
Nine thousand even, yes.
Okay. Okay, we currently have a motion to cut nine thousand from the line item. Five one two zero from registrar, we have a second.
Second motion.
Okay, first and second, do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Here and now, we're gonna vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Let's do that one more time, the ayes, can we raise our hands, I just wanna make sure. Okay, and and Rob, and Gary, you were nays, correct?
Right.
Okay, motion carries. Eric, where are we currently?
Mill rating three is a one point four two.
Where is our surplus?
Projected, I think, to be around five sixty, can we use five sixty to cover capital?
But where are we on that, within our range? Are we within our range or?
We're five, about five hundred and sixty over our.
We still are.
Well, now we're about ten thousand over projected.
How much would we have to add um to bring it down to one point two five?
You will cut ninety-one hundred from the general.
About a hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Yes, nine thou- nine thousand from registrar.
That's it. Eric, you said we're way one point four. No, yeah.
I think it's one point four two.
One point four.
Yeah, one point four two.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take another seventy-five thousand dollars from surplus to fund the budget.
To fund the operating side of the budget?
Correct.
One second.
Okay, we have a first and a second on seventy-five thousand from surplus to fund the operating side of the budget. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, well, this is five below our max.
Great, and that will put us seventy-five thousand in the hole for next year.
No. Where would that, where would that put us if we did approve the seventy-five? The mill rate?
Uh one point three four.
Go ahead, sir.
Um Eric, question. What obligations are we gonna add on next year? Infrastructure?
Yes.
Payments that we're not currently paying this year, is that correct?
No, but they're they're, some of them are budgeted for, that are in this budget coming up, but we'll have another additional probably hundred, hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
And is that one fifty in the budget or not?
Right now, there's only one interest payment in there, but next year we'll have two interest payments and the principal. So probably closer to two hundred thousand.
Are we rolling off any debt um or reducing any debt in next year's budget from this year's?
I don't think until, well, I think FY, let me say. I don't know if it's FY twenty. FY twenty-seven will be losing a hundred, little over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Eric, it's just like, um is there any anticipated revenue that's not on the books now that you anticipate next year, anything?
Open notes, get some bigger building fees once the infrastructure is in.
Nothing, nothing formally established, but um
That's what we're.
We have some opportunity.
When will the infrastructure be up and running, ready for hookup?
Sometime this year.
In this?
Probably toward the fall, fall.
Fall, fall of this budget.
You know, it's what we're hoping for.
So Eric, just so, just for for some clarity, that seventy-five thousand um that, al- although that's not a a large amount um unlike how we use that for capital, by using that to fund the operating side does create a seventy-five thousand dollar revenue shortfall, though the following year that we need to make up. Okay, any further discussion?
On the seventy-five thousand, right?
Um yes, yeah.
However, let me ask Mister Chairman if we didn't have but we don't have a cut uh from capital, so the contribution from surplus is exactly the same as what was being anticipated for the cut, correct?
We're funding it, yeah, we're funding it with the surplus, right? So there is that possibility, that could get rolled back next year, but it would be rolled back in dollar value, not in revenue.
Right, right, understood, thank you.
Okay, then we are going to vote on uh the motion of cutting so or taking seventy-five thousand from surplus to fund the operating side of the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three times um. So, real quick poll of everybody, we're currently at a one four two. Mark, we'll start down with you, where are you hoping to get to?
I don't have a number in my head, I think we need to be prudent in what we're doing to try to get funding to what we the what needs to be funded. I was saying in the last, earlier this week, it was one point five in my head, but you know, one point four I can live with. I don't think we should make cuts just to make cuts, I believe we should borrow too much money for next year. So it stays at one point four, I'm not upset.
Gary?
I think it should be low, but we just finished everything, so what is uh, what 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 are you looking for as if I want to lower, what do you look for?
I'm I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for anything, I'm just trying to get a read of a read of the board because, you know either now or very shortly, there's either gonna be more dialogue or um a discussion or things are gonna slow down on on what to cut or what not to cut, so I'm just kinda get a trying to get a read for, you know, for the benefit of everybody else that's sitting up here on kinda where everybody wants to settle in, are we are we done, are we looking to go down another tenth or two tenths of a of a mill rate or you know, that's that's what I'm trying to gauge, that's what I'm gathering.
Okay, so I would um be fine with around one point two five, but you know, that's
Okay, yeah.
I'm I'm also, I had indicated last week or earlier this week that I wanted to be between one and one point two five um seeing how, you know, how difficult the the job is, I've I I'm okay with one point two five, I'm not okay with one point four two.
Okay.
Um I'd I'd probably be willing to compromise in the low one point threes, but I just think we we have to realize that even though we have some debt rolling over in a couple of years, we also have additional expense coming in because that um athletic uh fields, um that has to be, that's going to be a big nut that we have to fund because they, those fields only last for X number of years, I think, nine or ten years and um and I don't see how we can fund it all in one go um unless we then bond it and and I don't think we really wanna bond it. Um so we're going to have to allocate some money over a couple of years. I I don't see um the pain for the taxpayers being lessened next year or the year after, I I think that one point two five is really um is really where we need to be. Um I don't know whether we have any room in the contingency to move, um I hadn't gotten to that part yet.
Okay. Tom?
By the time the field is repaired, replaced, twelve years, the uh, bond for the high school will be paid off. Um, I'm okay with the one point four two.
Rob?
I just have a question, and I don't know how I didn't catch it, but for planning the community development, maybe you can um, help me with this. Um, fifty one twenty, I, I believe it's procurement service contractual, it's twenty eight thousand. That's up from five thousand?
Primarily for a new GIS system.
Okay. And three thousand?
That's actually in the current year budget that we're in. It was put in last year.
The twenty eight thousand?
Yeah.
Then it's going through for this year again?
Yeah, it's an annual.
Oh, it's an annual, okay, alright, um. Economic Development Commission, they have three thousand? They've yet to use it?
They've used a very minimal this year so far.
So twelve, they've used some stuff since the end of the year?
Couple hundred dollars or something.
They're just even in the past, they haven't used it, um, so I have put a question. I'm fine with the one four two, I as expected, I don't, um, if my colleagues wanna see it lower, I'd be more than happy to uh, cut the highway position to help lower that and have the town feel some of the burden also on their budget, because they're only, the town budget's only being cut by nine thousand dollars. Whereas the schools being by five sixty. And as I said before, I don't think it's fair that the schools would have to cut positions while we're hiring other positions.
Matt?
I'm good with the one point four two, I'll just keep it simple and say that.
Eric, do we have any room to cut on the contingency?
I wouldn't go too much because we still have uh, negotiations coming up and some of that contingencies put away for that for.
Because it went from eighty to one sixty?
It's one ten right now.
Oh, okay, one ten. Would we go another thirty? Could we go back down to eighty, do you think?
That really put us probably around fifty once the negotiations are completed.
Pardon me, we, we would be fifty in the hole?
Because I have about thirty thousand in there for negotiations for things that may be included in the contract. So that would bring us back down to eighty, really.
For, for fifty for anything other than negotiations, you're saying?
That's what it would be if you got there, yes.
Rob?
Um.
Just, sorry, hold on, wait, Gail, finish, you're, I'm gonna wait till you're finished, I thought you were done.
I'd like to make the motion um, to cut thirty thousand from the uh, contingency, so that contingency would be at eighty thousand dollars.
We have a second?
Guess not.
Do we have a second? Second? I think that motion fails.
Doesn't look that way.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, the this is preliminary, what we've done today, correct, and it's gotta go to a public hearing, and then we after public hearing, we go over it in one more time. Correct? By that time, we will have final numbers for our negotiations.
We should.
And we'll know what we have a contingency, where, where everything stands, so if need be at that point, if there's some excess, then we can cut it into contingency. Yeah, that's why I was trying to, just to say, cutting it now seems not too prudent because we may need it later. But if we have the opportunity to do it later, we should, that's when we can make that option.
If we, if, if we all settle in where everybody's happy tonight, then, yeah, that'll be the, that'll be the budget that goes to um, public hearing and yes, we'll meet, we'll meet one more time after that because then we'll have to either tweak it and, and certainly take official action to then send it, send it to selectmen for town meeting.
Would this be appropriate time, remember when I had asked you earlier about uh, exploiting the funds for the school to come in to make a motion?
In the event that it comes in higher?
Yes.
I think I would probably wait until that actually happens and have that as part of the discussion at that point, because you're gonna wanna earmark it accordingly, yeah, you'd wanna, you wanna make that earmark, because I know that you did say that at the very beginning.
Right.
Um, but I think until we know what that would be, um, because obviously we would have to be again at that point anyway, because it's gonna mix, change things up. Um, that, then I would, yeah, bring that up at that point, and we can take action at that point.
Okay.
Will we have um final numbers from the state as well uh, by the end of April?
Probably not.
No, when do you expect those numbers?
Probably not until they end the session in early June.
Have you ever heard anything from, well, I guess I could ask the board a bit of, um, any kind of cuts coming from the federal level?
I haven't heard.
Nothing.
So, I don't wanna put anyone on the spot. Um, there were, Gary, Gary, you were right around one and a quarter?
Yeah.
We're at one four two now, is there anything else that you want to um, well, look at cutting at this point to get us down closer to that number, or are there any other? Any other cuts we wanna make at this point?
I don't wanna make any more cuts to the budget, uh, the operating budget, I was thinking, getting some more of that shut down, so.
More from?
Um, surplus, that's the shutdown, so.
Gail, do you have any other?
Um, well, I, I thought we could reduce contingency, but I understand the uh, um, the reasoning of waiting, um, but I'd like for the board of finance to at least revisit that one, once we know where we're going to be. Um, and um, I, I would have liked to see a little bit more come in from the um, surplus. Um, and I think that, uh, I'd like to ask Eric if he would um, between now and, and our next meeting, if you could run the numbers again and also see where we are as far as um, as far as tax collection.
Mm-hmm.
Which may, and, and, you know, when there are foreclosures, um, you know, properties that have a lot of back taxes, they have to pay them off, so you know, and I, I do know that there's a handful of foreclosures coming up in the spring, so would like to understand if that's gonna impact us at all.
Okay.
But other than that, Mister Chairman, um, I'm okay with, with the one point four two as a temporary mu- number to go forward, but my goal is really to get down to one point two five.
Okay. So we um, let me, I guess, poll the board on, on this, um, there, there was some discussion, obviously, in a in a motion that failed to use an additional seventy five thousand from surplus. Um, what is everyone's thoughts on whether or not we were to allocate any additional monies on the capital side that we've already done?
Do we, do you mean by cutting more capital?
If we were to use an additional, I don't know, we'll just say fifty thousand out of surplus um, and have that allocated to the capital budget, so that would increase that from five fifty to six hundred.
But that's.
Just a thought, and I don't, I don't know what, what are your thoughts, Eric?
You'd still be at the top end of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, still, net, net change.
But that might be more, that has to be covered in capital.
Wow, right. Matt, your thoughts, are you satisfied with where we are right now for?
I am, I'm comfortable where we are, and as we talk about that capital, I just keep thinking about next year, like I asked the question, what's rolling off and what's rolling on, and it looks like next year there'll be more rolling on than there is rolling off, so I, I think some of this extra money, I guess I would say, is, might be needed next year, would not maybe making this mill rate higher than it is right now for next year, is, is my concern is looking forward as well as today.
Rob, are you comfortable with uh, going to public hearing at one four two?
Yeah, I am, um, I would always like to, I mean, there was some additional cuts I'd like to see made to downside, um, to even it out, but.
Do you wanna try to work on that this evening?
Yeah, I.
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Let's do it.
Me? That's what we're here for, so I mean.
Um, it has to do with those positions. And it's been made pretty clear that everybody wants the full-time highway position and um, the part-time HR and part-time grant writer. Now, my, my thing would have been to uh, go with a full-time grant writer with the part-time HR and cutting the highway position. And that would have been a cut of eighty four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars to the general budget.
This is certainly your, your opportunity to.
So I make that motion that we cut eighty four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars from the general which would be funding the full-time grant writer, which will bring in revenue and funding the part-time HR and cutting the highway department position.
So that's really a hundred and fifteen thousand, though, isn't it, Eric, one fifteen two eighty seven?
Writer was put in as a part-time.
Right, we gotta account for all the benefits as well. Because full-time will be on the health insurance as well as pension.
So the full-time, the full-time highway was one fifteen two eighty seven, I believe, wasn't it, with, if you account for all benefits?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
A point of order, Mister Chairman, I believe that we need to, to um, go line item by line item and not uh, um, a, a grand total of the cut from um, the general government budget.
Hmm, you're right. You're right. Alright, what section is highway?
Thirty two oh one.
Alright, so Eric, can you tell us, so that we're not pointing, what numbers specifically are we gonna need to do, what, what account codes? Fifty one oh one is one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what else? Hold, hold, we'll just have him tell us what those are. And there's a health insurance, FICA and pension?
Yes.
So fifty one forty-five, fifty one fifty and fifty one fifty-five would be the, the other affected line items.
I could just ask a question.
Yes.
The uh, director, Bob Burris, you had mentioned earlier when we were talking about this, you had said something, whether it was part-time or seasonal. Does seasonal get benefits? No. In seasonal, you could hire someone just to cut the, the lawns, all the, all the grass. Because what, what would they, I mean, during the that's the primary job would be, the full-time position.
That position would be that during summer, but also duties during winter.
Oh.
We had a full-time, they're gonna primarily be focused on mowing.
Right, right.
After the mowing season, they would be focused on snow removal and other tasks.
Yeah, drift removal task. So if I could amend that motion?
Go ahead.
So the line item fifty one oh one?
Yeah.
I'd like to make the motion that we, um, instead of full-time, that we fund that as a seasonal?
Seasonal as opposed to part-time? Was, that, that is different also, correct?
Is that something that can be at your discretion? Ra- is it about the same cost, seasonal or part-time now?
You'd have to look back here for three years.
Do you want to hold up on that, to get those answers, or do you wanna continue with that?
Yeah, I'll hold on to get those answers, absolutely.
Alright. So Eric, if it was, if it was um, part-time the total cut would be eighty four thousand, three sixty-three, I only know that because I asked you that question before the meeting. Um, if it was seasonal, what would the total cut be?
It all depends on we don't know what we're gonna pay them, we don't know how many hours they're gonna work, how many weeks they're gonna work, that'll have to be
Okay.
discussed.
And that part-time was at nineteen and a half, which is the maximum that they can work?
Before being subject to pension and insurance.
Does that help?
Like, no, it never would be.
Yeah, it was.
What's the comfort?
What would be, what would the, if it was, if it were to go to part-time, can you tell us what the cuts would be to each of those line items, fifty one oh one, fifty one forty-five, fifty one fifty and fifty one fifty-five?
They were part-time?
Yes.
Fifty one oh one, the new number would be four sixty-four, six seven seven. Fifty one forty-five would be two thirty-three, three thirty-eight. Fifty one fifty would be forty-four oh nine six. And fifty one fifty-five would be one oh four four eight nine.
Okay, and if um, if there ends up being a motion and that motion were to pass and we cut those monies, what road would be landing at the mill rate?
One point two nine.
What would that total be for cut? I'm sorry, that was a good question.
For each line item or as a whole?
As a, as a whole, uh, would, would I need to make motion as?
You're gonna, you would make it each line item, yes, you'd make a, a motion reduce line item to this, 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 bubble through.
The total would be one oh seven nine two nine. The total would be one oh seven nine two nine.
To go from. Full-time to part-time?
Wow.
I had in my notes that before you said that the, the total delta would be about eighty-five thousand.
That was a change in salary.
Change in salary was?
Was the eighty. And change, the eighty-four three sixty-three, yeah.
Okay.
That was not, well, it was a change in. It wasn't accounting for the uh savings and benefits, all the benefits.
Okay.
Seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy-eight, yeah, it'll be seventy, seventy-eight thousand, yeah. And one two nine, you said, where we would land, that was part-time?
Yeah.
I'm gonna hold up at this um, chairman, I'm sorry.
You're welcome, that's fine. So are you good at one four two going to public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's more than I would like it to be.
All right, Tom?
I'm okay with one four two.
Okay. Gail, are you good with one four two to go to public hearing, or would you like to make another? Cut or cuts?
Um. I think we should look at it after, I think Rob, Rob and I. I think we agree on that, you know, we're sort of both on the fence, but let's see what the public hearing is, let's see what our numbers are. Um. I, I also want to ask, um, so my answer to you is yes, I'm okay with one point four two.
Good.
For now, um, on the board of selectmen budget though, I'm two oh one. Um. Where we have the HR director and there's no number for the line item. Um, but it's right below five one two oh N as in Nancy. Um. Have we adjusted, I mean, this is a ni- new HR director, you're assuming that you might be able to. Share it with the board of ed, but if you can't, then it's gonna be part-time. Um. Assuming that it's shared with the board of ed, is that line item including both salary and benefits or just salary?
That's actually got salary and uh. FICA, social security factors, which would need to be broken out.
Okay.
Um, but they, they wouldn't be subject to benefits, cause they'd only be fourteen hours or so a week.
But if we did a combo. Then they would be subject to benefits.
Right.
And then it would go up, correct?
Correct.
So we're better to test the waters with the part-time inquiry, is that your feeling? Or aren't there any people out there that wanna work part-time?
Well, I think this number included if it was a full-time person, if not, we would just use that for a part-time person. This is what we estimated our boss would be if it was full-time.
And if we were able.
With the benefits.
Do you see? That if we were able to get a part-time HR person. Do you see that that would free up your time to work on grants and? And, and other people in the town hall that would normally have the skill set to work on grants or?
For selectmen for sure, and I could as well.
So um, just to kind of. Hope to provide a little clarity, Gail, I'm sorry, you're not done?
So do we need, if we're gonna fund the HR director, do we need to fund the grant writer? Is what my question is.
Okay. All right, so. Just to provide a little clarity. There has been no dialogue, correct, between the town and the school as far as the additional. So their budget is done, we just cut their budget by five hundred and sixty thousand, so it's pretty safe to assume that. For this year, the haze in the barn. That, you know, that if there's going to be any, any movement um on. Uh, a combined position, it would not happen until next year.
Unless we put more money into their budget.
Well.
To cover it.
We can put whatever in their budget, but we're, they're not obligated to spend it on what we tell them, that's, that's their purview, not ours.
So the fifty-two thousand for the HR director is going to provide for a part-time, two-day-a-week?
Or we could go up to nineteen and a half hours if. We had that funding.
Would fifty-two thousand cover the nineteen and a half hours?
Yeah.
So I guess my question again is, if, if we can shift responsibilities in that way. Um, and people can take up tasks that they didn't have time for before. Do we really need the grant writer?
I wouldn't count on. Myself and the first selectman have a lot of time to write for things.
Okay.
And I think we've talked about this before, in other towns that had grant writers at full-time positions and paid for themselves, so. I'm still at the position where grant writer, part-time or full-time, will pay for itself.
Okay. And after a year, we'll know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'm okay with one point four two.
Gary, are you good with um sending one four two to public hearing, or would you like to? Um. Make an additional cut or shortcuts?
I'm not okay with one four two. I'll make another motion every bull's seventy-five thousand dollars.
For what purpose? I don't think you can, we've already, that motion's already been made and that motion failed.
Okay, then I'm not comfortable with one point four two.
Okay, you can make another motion, but it can't be the identical motion of the one we already voted on and it failed.
Seven.
Okay, I'll make the motion for seventy thousand.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to. Take seventy thousand from surplus to fund the. Operating side. Of the budget. What would that bring us down to, Eric?
One point three four.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Well, I think that this is something that we probably would entertain at some point during the process, it may be premature to make these decisions now. And so I think you might be better off waiting until it has to go public forum and then getting the numbers back when the negotiations are settled. And we know where the numbers are gonna fall. I think that would prudent.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a first and a second, so we are gonna vote on this, uh, the motion is to take seventy thousand from surplus to fund the operating side of the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, they're not.
Okay, the motion fails. Mark, are you okay with going to public hearing with one four two?
For now, yes.
Okay. Um, Eric, first my memory, do we, we don't need a motion for this, do we?
No.
Cause we're not, it's not going to selectmen or going over there, okay? Okay. Then um. We're gonna move on to the next item in the budget, which is discussion and possible action on creating recreation budget policy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, um, we passed out a um. Copy of uh what was proposed as a recreation department budget structure policy. Um, and uh this is something that Tom and I have worked on with Ryan, um. The uh rec department director, and um I did send a copy to Ryan and he's gotten back to me saying that it looks good to him. Um. We passed it around last meeting to see if anybody wanted to make any suggestions, we're, we're trying to focus in on. Just the management and procedures for the introduction of new programs. Um, that weren't anticipated at the budget. Um, season but come up. Um, after budget season so that opportunities can be utilized without um having to um. Uh, vote on additional funds. Um, the rec department director. Thank you. The rec department um director. Had initially asked for um a way to move money from uh one. Um, one line item to another automatically and to sort of create a reserve. Um. We, we don't really offer that kind of um. Uh, flexibility that many other line item budgets in the general government side, and so. Realizing that there's a creativity element in his budget that we don't have in others. Uh, that pops up at different times of the year, we'd wanted to um, to offer a. Um, a little flexibility so that he could go ahead with um. Budgeting even though our resources are limited, so um, this also creates. A requirement for a break-even analysis that we really haven't had in the past. And um, it's, I, I think it's going to remove a lot of question marks that we've had. In the past uh about the budget as far as uh break-even, and I think just moving through that. It tells us which programming um just is, is. Deep down in the red and which programming might have an opportunity to be a moneymaker, especially with tuition. So um, that's why we have that break-even analysis in there as well, so um. So we're proposing that and we're looking for any comments or edits that anyone might want to add.
If, if the board will indulge, I have two questions um but immediately come to mind. Um. The first one is. Um, these break-even analysis, are there re- any reporting mechanisms that we're going to receive to be able to track any of this?
I believe that, that's something that um Ryan had expected to um present to uh the finance director.
Okay, so my second question is really based um more from a, I guess a, uh more of a historical context. Um, for. Many, for many, many years, um. There were. Members of the board. This board that found it. Difficult to track your budget, that's probably the best, that's the easiest way that I could describe that, I found it very difficult to track your budget. Where's the money coming from, where's it going, how much should we spend? Um. So Gail, I'll, I'll ask you because. Lack of just a better way to describe it, you and I are kind of the dinosaurs here on, on this board, um, so I understand, I was present during some of that. Um, does this budget? Adequately address what those shortcomings were and those concerns were, looking back?
That's a really good question, um, not entirely. And that's because we're making a stab in the dark, and this is a budget that really needs. To be amended this time next year, after we see how we can work through the break-even analysis with Ryan. Um, we, we don't wanna make his job an eighty-hour job in accounting, um, we, we. We really want to um allow the department the creativity, but I was with you. With my concern about not being able to read the budget and track the expenses and revenues from year to year. And, and that's where I think we can. Provide him with the uh flexibility and creativity for new programming and. Get a break-even analysis on existing mature programs. So, and I think that that's a conversation. That Ryan would have with the finance director, but also with us. Um, because it's a learning curve, I think, for both sides of the discussion. Um, so I, I'm really, we had. Several meetings where we talked about the allocation of a, a share of fixed costs. Um, across the board to new programming, as well as the variable costs that went, went along with the programming and. And Ryan has started to do that, and a- actually during one of our meetings, he had, he had indicated that. A project that he thought would be a great idea, the Hopeville. Fun run, once he went through that analysis, he saw the numbers more clearly. Um, and he said, no, he'd have to have, you know, double the number of participants for break-even. And therefore, it wasn't a reasonable project to go after because he didn't think he could get double the participants. So I think, I, I, I think that this is um. This is an experiment, frankly.
Okay, so, so while this policy certainly tightens up some of those issues and concerns of the past. Um. It's largely going to, I guess, be up to. Um, to you, um. In terms of how this is executed, cause that could directly correlate to whether or not you get that same. Funding the following year based on the success.
Yeah, so just to be clear, um, so since two thousand and seven I started, I've always had break-even analysis for everything I did. Um, this, channel finance at that time, I would share the same information I do with Eric. Um, I don't do anything new without checking with Eric, um, Eric is very honest, if things are gonna work or not work. Um, and he's very clear in that stuff, so I don't want you to think I don't ever create a program without rationale that's gonna break even, make a profit. Um, when I came to Hopeville, um, the big, the elephant in the room is a nineteen hundred dollar fee for the actual park. So that's a lot to get over. Um, in that analysis, so basically breaking it down, is this an Excel revenues versus, you know, net income and all that? I didn't include the sponsors in that first meeting, so I actually texted you guys right after we left. This wasn't included, I actually thought about it, and then the next, next time we met, like, why are you that off? And all it was, the sponsors weren't listed, but even with the sponsors listed, you needed like thirty, forty runners, I think we're at twenty something at the time. And that's why I canceled the whole thing, and which works out, cause we're doing a color one with the PTOs going in May. So we took what we had and made something better out of it, and that's why I cut nineteen hundred dollars this year, cause we're not gonna go back to Hopeville, cause there's no reason to do it.
Right.
Um, cause we can benefit, you know, the schools as well. Um, so yeah, I just wanna be very clear, I don't do anything throwing money out there, hoping to make a profit. Cause my reps on the line, make it as simple as possible, um, but yeah. As, everything I have done, requested from the day I started goes to finance first, before I start doing anything.
Would um anybody like to make a motion to adopt the uh recreation department budget structure policy as presented?
I'll make the motion.
And we have a second, any discussion?
I just wanna thank Tom and Gail and all the work they've done.
And, and Ryan.
And Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you for all. Thank you for. Doing that for us. You don't break myself.
Any further discussion? We're gonna vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Final item is adjournment. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.